Adequate notice that this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Township Public Schools District Website, and the posting of such notice at the August T Minor Administrative Offices at each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Roll call.
Mrs. Caminiti, Mr. DeFranco.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mr. Dino.
Here.
Mr. Little.
Here.
Mrs. Minnie.
Here.
Mrs. Wright.
Here.
Mrs. Stella.
Here.
Mrs. Rock.
Now I would like to call up our student speakers from High School South, Daniel Buckstall and Julie Sella.
Hey there.
How you guys doing, guys? Good to see you.
Good.
Perfect. Thanks, guys. Good evening, everyone. This week marks the end of the second market period. We're very excited. Students currently taking their quarterly assessments. Very difficult. The Eagle Eye newspaper put out our full-size letter issue. It's a 12-page of full-grade stories, including reports, piece of teenagers who sleep, student musicians, the band outside of school, plus an opinion piece on fake news. A feature on our award-winning female school nurse. Our generous PFA gave us a grant to buy newspaper stands to distribute our papers which we place around the buildings. Great success. Mrs. Malte's journalism class students were given a surprise Skype session with Meghan Murphy who founded the Kindness Rocks Project. They go and move into create kindness and hopefully compassion. The movement is based on the profound truth that one message at the right moment can change someone's day, or how long and indeed their whole entire life. Message on these thoughtful petals may take form through gratitude, affirmations, encouragements, and hope other than that public. This Murphy response is due Emily Strong's request for an interview by emailing this Malte scheduled discussion session as a special treat acknowledging Emily's professionalism. The movement has now caught on South thanks to Stinky for making the January challenging contest most creative slash aspiring rock design. Also, the South English Department under the direction of Lisa Whitmore, Justin Malte, and Amy Brin participated in the New Jersey Poetry Out Loud Festival for the first time this year. A contest where a student memorizes, I'm sorry, a student memorized famous poems and recite them in front of the audience. This year's all winners was junior Dave D'Uccenzo, who will go on to compete in the New Jersey Poetry Out Loud Regional Competition at the Count Basie Theater at the River Theater. On February 7th, the Vow Cavers will deliver a new lesson to all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in the district to the dangers of vaping. The girls swim team won the B-North Division Title. Very excited about that. James Anderson was named the second team all-WOBM Holiday Tournament Team on September 30th. Jack Sheridan was named the MVP of the team's World Wide Games at Brookdale on January 12th.
Thank you, Captain.
And from High School North, Adam Hill and Amy Drake.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On January 3rd, Middletown High School will have its annual holiday day with senior school about their experiences at the high school. The spring musical, Do You Wanna Dance?, has been cast and rehearsals are well underway with performances scheduled for March. Student Alex Lohatsky had her two films, The Hunt and Double Seam, accepted into the Garden State Film Festival. Raymond Sancho had her experimental film, Wondering. And Gasmim Delmas had her film, Beyond Dreamers, accepted into the festival in Asbury Park, which will take place at the end of March. We give our congratulations to Dylan Robinger, who won Best Actor for the short film Confession at the 2018 Top Indie Film Awards for December. He was also nominated for Best Strategic Film. The short film, The Hunt, by Alex Lohatsky, was also nominated for Best Student Film and Best Humor. The Advanced Placement Course Information of Parents and Students was hosted in the Middletown High School Theatre on the 14th. On Thursday, January 10th, the High School Boys Science Team kicked off their 2019 season in highlight fashion. Some highlights include: The Biology One Team earned a top third-place finish. The Biology Two Team coming in second place with Michael Merritt earning the top overall individual score. The Penistry One Team are getting third-place finish. Ethan Kusaba got a 92 on his test, which was well enough to earn the third place overall. Penistry Two Team earned a third-place finish with Sarah Day-Dichius finishing in third place in the individual scores. The High School Physics Team led by Ryan Allen gained first place with Ryan earning the top individual score. And the AP Physics C Team gained first place with Kate River earning a third-place individual score. The team looks to continue their success in February. On the 14th, the Middletown High School Poetry Out Loud Competition was held after school. We give our congratulations to Gasmim Delmas winner and Sarah Day-Dichius runner-up of this year's MHSN Poetry Out Loud Contest. And the Boys Bowling Team has a record of 36-6, with the top three bowlers consistently scoring above 200 points.
Alright, now it's my turn. Hi, I'm Kelly. We've had a great day. We start with the quarterly today. And with the quarterly, our seven leaders, Emmett McMahon, Sean Kelly, Don Wilkins, and Mel Tabaco. Leader arrangement with the Align to Therapy Dogs have Eli, the Portuguese Water Dog, come to the high school during blocks three and four, help the students relieve their stress during the quarterly assessments. There was an assembly program presented to our diverse S U students by the New Jersey Sheriff's for Corbin donations. Drama Workshop class of the academy students went to Fort Mom to put on a production of Stella Luna for the inner earth students. The High School North wrestling team shared the state division title this season with Ocean and Goldknut. Dr. George met with the High School North students for the quarterly student forum on Monday, January 5th. Peter Melon, who teaches aerospace, science, technology, and technical drawings in High School North's 2018 and 2019 Teacher of the Year. Congratulations. There will be, I'm sorry, there was a regional DECA competition on January 4th. High School North, we are sending four finalists to Atlantic City for the state round competition. And the winners of that competition will be going down to Orlando for a national competition. The Drama Series will be attending a production of The North Is Off tomorrow at Two River Theater. Peter Isherwood, our choir director, has been facilitating of the Allshore Choir rehearsals. And the performance will be held at Monmouth Regional on February 2nd. Mr. Scala and our social studies teachers, newspaper quote advisor, and student government advisor, and the GLP-3 pathway advisor will, has reported the following activities. The United States History classes are participating in the Legal Women Voters internship program. The student government has been involved in multiple awareness campaigns in the school, five projects that include the Ball Champions Project, MHSN Hall of Fame, MHSN Loud Touring Project, anti-vaping campaign, anti-bullying campaign, and autism awareness campaign. Mr. Hoffman organized the Autism Slam Dunk Challenge on Saturday, January 19th with the Boys and Girls Festival, since all throughout the day. And all of the proceeds will go to the special education program. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Student voice, ladies and gentlemen.
Alright, we need a motion going to executive session for the matters of student matters, negotiations, and personal.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Assumptions. Okay, this meeting will now come to order. Adequate notice that this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Township Public Schools District Website, and the posting of such notice at the August T Minor Administrative Offices at each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Please stand for the belligerent reasons. At my feet.
This is the flag of the United States of America. In the Republic of America, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mrs. Caminiti.
Here.
Mr. DeFranco.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mr. Donovan. Mr. Little. Mrs. Minnie.
Here.
Mrs. Wright.
Here.
Mrs. Stella.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Johnson. Would you make a request of the new opportunity of overcoming after the presentation?
Absolutely. That's fine. Can you start with our presentations, part two of district goals and strategic plan update?
I'm usually a good man. I'm a good player.
We're presenting to the board, like, if you were to mic.
Where is the?
So you're gonna be on there.
So, you know, the graphics and I want to find these videos. And I don't, I mean, I don't.
Maybe see your question. I'd say if you were to mic.
Okay, you're gonna be right on the video, let me tell you. Because I usually am, and I usually order mine. Hi, Neil. How are you?
Just a reminder to the public, please hold your questions for your public comments after all three presentations are finished.
Good evening. I'm Amy Mauder, the district administrator. We are here to give part two of our strategic plan update. In December, we gave an update on some of our district goals for the year. And we are going to be continuing that this evening by going over the ones that we did not cover. So, to start off, we have community and public relations. That was an area of our strategic plan where we put in goals for this year to accomplish things that was per our strategic plan that we would like to move forward with this year. So, one of the big areas that we've been working on is our district website and our app redesign. We have done community surveys, and we have done a lot of work on the website and our app to give it a new look. I don't know how many of you have gone on to the district website to look, but it has a whole new feel to it, a whole new flow. There's a lot of content on there. We did have a lot of content before, but we've even expanded upon that. As Mrs. Pecos is showing some of the dropdowns and features of the new website. So we find that it's easy to navigate and has a lot of good information on there. So, if you haven't checked it out, please check it out. If you have checked it out, thank you. And we are proud to unveil that for this year along with our app.
And I know another, another goal is to increase our social media. So if you look at the left-hand side there, our social media is always stacking on that side. So you have Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, and Instagram, which we're increasing our presence as a district on those social media platforms.
Hashtag and TPS product.
And I know Mr. Alston is also working with each school. Our main priority was to get the district site up, and now Mr. Alston is working with each school to convert the old layout into the new layout. So, you know, eventually we'll have a seamless webpage from the district to Thompson, to Leonardo, to whatever school. All be similar with the same layout.
I know that you, those of you who have come to board meetings have heard about our future Ready School Certification Program that we have done a lot of work on over the last few years. I guess Mrs. Pecos is going to show you that on our website as well. We have achieved certifications under that program. I believe we are at, Dr. George.
Silver certification. Gold.
We are in gold certification.
We are working towards gold. We have achieved silver certification. We're in the process of working towards gold right now.
We're the largest district. We're the largest district with 17 schools to that obtain the silver certificate.
Seventeen of only 34 schools in the entire state of New Jersey.
So our participation in that program is in line with our community and public relations goal. And, you know, the revamping of our website and all of our social media platforms is also a component of getting those advanced certifications. So, that is something we wanted to make everybody aware of if you weren't already. We also have other new and expanded partnerships under the area of community and public relations. We have, I am not going to leave this slide for beta, but we have partnered with various organizations. The YMCA, CPC Counseling has been expanded to addition, to middle school and increased our partnership with community and school. We have a partnership with the Mental Health Association of Monmouth County. We have continued partnerships with other organizations, medical, Monmouth Medical Crisis, River View, a hospital crisis screening. So this is just to give you an example of the community outreach that we have either started new or expanded upon in recent months. The next goals that we are going to talk about is the goals under long-range planning. And there was an objective in long-range planning to analyze student population needs in order to ensure that our existing facilities are equipped to accommodate current and future enrollments. So, in interest of doing that, we are continuing to monitor our school enrollment. So what we're presenting for you here, and this will be up on the website, so you don't have to write down numbers or, you know, take notes. But we have updated our enrollments from June 2018 to January, this month, 2019, in each school. So you can see, we have six of our elementary schools here, and the next six on this page. Total, at the elementary level, our enrollment at the end of June 2018 was 4,306 students. We are now at 4,247. So we've had a decrease in enrollment since last June at the elementary level of 59 students spread out amongst the 12 elementary schools that we have. With the capacity that we've been using, and those of you who have seen our previous presentations, the capacity numbers that we have are from our previous long-range facilities plan and how they were calculated under district practice at that time, which would be primarily class sizes and how, so how many students could be housed in buildings based upon district practice of class size. That number is 4,584. So at this point, we are under capacity across the 12 elementary schools by using those numbers at 337 students. At the secondary level, you can see we have totals for the middle schools. We have gone from 2441 to 2309. So we've lost 132 students at the middle school level. And that results in being actually under capacity by 47 students. So if any of you remember, previous presentations that we've done on this have shown that we were over capacity at the middle school level. Well, that is now being pushed through the grades, and a lot of those students have moved up to the high school level. So at this point, the middle school level is back within the capacity that we have been using. And at the high school level, you can see skipping down to the bottom of this slide, we actually are under capacity by one using the numbers that we have from our previous long-range facilities plan. So a lot of those students have trickled up to the high school. High School North has gained 42 students. The High School South has gained 110 students since last June. So we've seen an increase there at the high school level. So at this point, the high schools overall are under capacity by one student. But South is really over capacity by 193. And North is 194, under capacity. So a few notes we want to make, the district total. We've gone from 9603 to 9564. So that's a decrease of enrollment of 39 students overall, which is not significant based upon the fact that we have, you know, 9,500 students. But it is, it's not an increase. It is, you know, a slight decrease. We did put a few notes on here just so that you know the parameters from which these are being presented. The schools that had asterisks as next to them are schools that host special education, self-contained programs, and preschool classes. So, the reason why we say that is because some of those schools, if they didn't have those classes there, their enrollments would be lower, obviously. And those, those classes don't necessarily have to be housed at those schools, but they aren't, we don't offer every program in each school. So, it's just something to keep in mind as we're looking at the numbers across the board. Student counts include half-day preschool students and shared-time students. So we have students who are, that are included in the enrollments that may not be there all day. We also have approximately 40 students that were relocated from Navisync to River Plaza and Leonardo last year when we got rid of the modular. So if you were taking a look, we kind of looked through that slide quickly, but you could see that Navisync's number of students had gone down quite a bit, and River Plaza and Leonardo had gone up. And it was not because of any real change in population, but it was because we moved students based upon the elimination of the modular. Capacity numbers are based on district practice at the time that we, the district did their last exhaustive classroom inventory and capacity numbers. Now, we did vet those capacity numbers when we, as we've been doing this planning. But even since we have been discussing the capacities and the enrollments, we have made changes in our practice for class sizes, which would impact these numbers if we were rolling that out for the different schools. So for example, you know, we have class sizes that are a little higher in the elementary school and some of the upper grades. And we've increased class sizes at the middle and high school level in some of those classes. So that would actually make the capacity numbers bigger in each building, which would make the numbers of students under capacity larger because we would actually have more room in the buildings based upon the fact that we're using larger class sizes. So under facilities and finance, another objective that we have was to enhance and prioritize security improvement. So I'm going to let Mr. Vanilla expand on that.
So. So, Mr. McGuire, our district's supervisor of security, and myself, over the summer and throughout this school year, have attended a lot of different professional development opportunities. They're listed up here, a lot of public agencies, the state police, the local Middletown Township Police Department, Office of Emergency Management, the Middletown Police Department, the EMS. And really, what we're doing when we go out and we meet with these agencies is we're presenting our plans, our emergency plans, to them and they're reviewing, and we're collaborating with them to make sure that our emergency plans are in line with their expectations and also that we have the best practices in place. Another thing that we're doing, Mr. McGuire and myself, at our one meeting with the state police, they invited us with, they have a checklist and they go out and do building security audits. They provided that to us. So, we turned that into a Google Doc, and we're in the process of visiting all the facilities and using the same checklist that the state police use just to make sure that we're in line and looking for places that we can improve. And once we have all, visited all the different facilities, we're going to share that information with the local agencies as well so we can collaborate and make sure that we're on the same page. And one other piece that's, we're in the, in the process of implementing is, the Middletown Police Department is working with the districts, and we're actually starting to add geolocations. So, all of our schools are online with the police department. And what they actually do is they take Google images, Google map images, they overlay it on our tour plans of our buildings. So if there's ever an emergency or a crisis, everybody's looking at the same thing, and they put it on the grids, you know, on the grids. So everybody, if you say A1, you know, everyone needs to report to A1. No matter what language you're, you know, is calling in your agency, A1 is going to be the same for anyone. So we're in the process of implementing that. Hopefully, I don't know exactly when we'll have all the buildings online, but they are in the process of implementing that right now. And then some of the trainings that we've implemented throughout, throughout the district, again, is continue to review the current best practices. Mr. McGuire does a lot of research. Every time that there's an unfortunate incident takes place, he spends a lot of time reviewing that. He gets a lot of reports from state and national agencies who review them. Again, goes back and looks at our plans, make sure that we're in line with what's happening and what the expectations are. We also conduct monthly substitute teacher trainings because through one of the reports that you read, a lot of substitutes feel as though if there's a lockdown or a shelter in place, they don't know how to handle the situation. So we've implemented, this is our second year now of doing it. Last year, we started halfway through the year. This is our first full year. But every substitute that's in our district has to go through our training before they go into the building, before they're actively in the police office. So before they can accept a job, they've got to do the security training with Mr. McGuire and myself. And the last one there is just conduct biannual review of the security procedures. And again, I had already mentioned that we use all incidents. It has, you know, regular meetings with the security staff to make sure that, to detect if issues are being addressed.
The last area we'll update you on is our objective to continue to look for additional revenue sources. And there's two areas that we were focusing on as part of the plan. We were going to be looking at before and after care, that program, to see if there's a way that the district could realize revenue from that, and also the area of grants. So in the area of the before and after care program, we were looking, we've been considering the possibilities of either running our own program or partnering with a vendor to, and creating a revenue stream for the district. Right now, we do not receive any revenue from the program that's run in the district. So, we will be looking, our contract with our current provider is expiring at the end of this year. We are going to be doing requests for proposals and to get from vendors proposals that would provide the district with an income stream as well as provide quality services for the students of the district. So we will be going through that process over the next few months. As far as grants, we always do pursue grants. We receive many grants in the district. We were looking at the possibility of contracting with a grant writer to further expand our reach for grants. We have talked to some grant writers to see what the financial viability of that would be. And unfortunately, for the amount of money that we would have to pay to an outside grant writer, and then for the grants that are available for schools in general, and the fact that we don't qualify for a lot of things that are out there because they are skewed toward districts with more economically challenged populations than ours, it does not, we've not been able to identify a situation where retaining a grant writer and paying the money for that service would be beneficial to us considering the amount of grants that we would be able to get from that source. So we do continue to pursue grants on our own. Our entire staff is always looking for opportunities. We have a lot of individual teachers, as well as administrators and district-wide initiatives to get grants. So we will continue to do that. We find that that's probably the best way to go. We've talked to other districts and they have found the same thing. We did also talk to the township who uses a grant writer, and we were trying to partner with them, but the municipalities have a lot of opportunities available to them that we don't have. And it pays more for them to have a grant writer to get those opportunities. There's a lot of those grants that are not available to school districts, and it just wouldn't pan out the same way it does on a municipal level. So, we are continuing to pursue grants on our own. We continue to have success. And there may not be large grants, but they do add up, you know, 2,000 here, 10,000 there. It does, you know, help fund our initiatives here in the district, whether it be smaller, you know, more medium-sized projects. We are looking at the possibility of contacting some foundations to see whether we could get some specific projects funded through there. We know some districts have had luck doing that. So that is something that we're looking at. And we'll keep everybody up to date on our progress there. But actually paying a grant writer a consultative fee to do that, it just doesn't seem to be something that would benefit us economically. So that's our update. We promised to be succinct, so we hopefully achieve that goal. And we look forward to our last year of our And we look forward to our net, our last year of our strategic plan and forming the new one. And we will continue to give you updates on all of that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
One question up to the floor. Here, I guess affordability is still in our, right now we just collapsed here.
Correct.
So, affordability, I think, a lot of people are arguing this. Why is definitely the greatest, but I think it's probably affordable. That's something we need to think about. Like, do we just pay?
Yes, I mean, certainly, as we develop the rubric for the proposals, the cost to the parents would be favorable, yes.
Can we have a question?
Yes.
The elementary schools, when you were looking at the capacity, when you looked at Navisync, because we took the trailers away, does that capacity number change?
We did reduce the capacity number on this chart based on our estimate of what those classrooms would have represented. So, that was another note that we, I, I made on there. I might have verbalized that, but yeah, we cut that down.
Thank you, because that's four classrooms.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the microphone to public comment on agenda items only. Okay, see, nobody comes to the mic. I'd like the motion to approve the minutes for executive session on December 12th. Regular voting meeting on December 12th. Reorganization meeting on January 2nd. Special voting meeting on January 6th. And executive session on January 6th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's it.
I've stayed on the executive session of December 12th, 2018. Regular voting meeting of December 12th, 2018.
Okay, moving on to the report. Moving on to the report of the president. Just a few fundraisers I wanted to tell everybody about. The Courtney Rose Foundation is having an event February 23rd and 24th at the Turning Point Restaurant. If you eat there, you get a $10 gift card for your next visit that you must use by the end of March, and that's for the Courtney Rose Foundation. We also have Leonardo Great Schools is doing a fundraiser. It's called the Back to the Eighties Gift Auction, and it's scheduled for March 29th, 2019. It'll take place at VFW Post 2179 in Port Monmouth. They're taking contributions, and all donations will be used in their raffle baskets. If you have any questions, you can contact them. That's LS, I'm sorry, LGSGiftAuction@gmail.com. That's LGSGiftAuction@gmail.com. And last but not least, I'm sure you know that we are in the middle of a government shutdown right now, and there are furloughed workers who haven't received a paycheck, and now this Friday will not receive a paycheck again, and are having trouble paying their mortgage, paying their rent. They don't have food to put on the table, they're having to go to food banks, and it's a very desperate situation. And we'd like to help out any way we can by supporting Tom Jaimo with his SOS Matters.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire.
You're welcome. Would you like to explain, Tom?
Well, what we've done is we've created a non, what we've done is we've created a nonprofit called SOS Matters, and it actually originated in the wake of Superstition and Standing. And it's a social media platform where we can help people out who are in crisis, whether it's a financial crisis, sexual abuse, domestic violence, whatever. But in light of the government shutdown, what we've been doing over the last three weeks, we've partnered up with a number of organizations, both locally and statewide, to collect dry goods and primarily gift cards to assist those in the United States Coast Guard and the National Park Service. It's been very, very successful thus far. I know that Dr. George most recently sent a letter out to the seventeen principals of our schools, alerting people to the program. There are a number of drop-off points that we've established throughout Monmouth and Ocean County. Thus far, I can tell you, we've reached out from as far north as Hoboken to as far south as Kegney County. We have raised thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars in gift cards and perhaps twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars in dry goods. If you go to SOSMatters.com, there's a list of items that people are in need of. I will also tell you that on Friday nights, the VFW Post, which is located in Port Monmouth, will be providing free hot meals to families if you're associated with the Coast Guard or the National Park Service or you are a furloughed government employee. Today, I spoke with the owner of the Foodtown supermarkets in our area, and he has partnered up with Lunch Break. Lunch Break also will be providing hot meals to families who are impacted by the shutdown. Gift cards work best, they cannot be in increments over twenty dollars. I had a woman come into my office on Monday, as a matter of fact, and she personally dropped off two thousand dollars in gift cards from Foodtown. Diapers, formula, you know, anything and everything that we all need just simply to survive each and every day. So, whatever you can do individually or collectively would be much appreciated. And we intend to continue with this effort for as long as the government is shut down. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, do we have a report of the business administrator? Report or just just have the ideas? Okay, I need a motion to approve A1 through four.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That's it. I need a motion for C1 through six.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Where do we fall on calendar, so item three?
Yes.
Have we made any edits to the calendar since we last discussed last week?
No, guys, and I provide the information to the, we're not since our last act.
So, so, I'm sorry, so is the, is the Monday after jury week still a day of closure for the district?
Well, the issue on that is that it's a federal holiday. So, the issue becomes that by contrast, we have employees that, the teachers, bargaining, can choose to take that day off. So, it causes a potential supervision issue as of past. And that's why, if we maybe consider that day, that's why they, you know, recommend that we be closed.
It's, it's open to staff for professional development.
Yes, open to staff.
What we did is schedule a professional development day that may have been scheduled on another day during the year to that day to mitigate the need for substitutes. And then you'd have two days where there were potentially disruptions to education or classroom destruction, we packaged it together on Monday.
Did, did the MTA say directly that they, they wanted that day off? In the meeting, you spoke to the MTA, and they said that we want Veterans Day, and we would say take an extra day after President's Day?
What we did was, we reviewed, as we reviewed the number of personnel we had absent as with a contract on those days. We, we reviewed that as a potential exposure as opposed to, you know, we can do the professional development at the end of the year. Supervision and coverage of a significant number of workers, which is the issue. It's somewhere around fifty to seventy workers. Teachers can choose not to be there today. Significant impact on teaching and learning, that's why we as a committee made a recommendation.
Mr. President, I just call to, to the natural organization, I'm sorry, for the question I said. To the normal federal holidays that are normally, you know, scheduled, New Year's Day, Christmas Day, President's Day, there were Memorial Day. There were only two remaining that were not on the original calendar, that we had the original iterations. We had many versions of this calendar as closed, which were Columbus Day and then that Monday, Veterans Day. And in the final draft, for our fourth iteration that you saw, that where the professional day was moved to, to those two last three federal holidays that were not already closed dates or schedules.
Can I say a word about the calendar? So, I, I notice that it's a very touchy subject every year when it comes up. And I've, as, as a working mom, I've had my own issues with calendars. About two years ago, my school district was not off the same week for spring break that my husband and daughters was off, you know, it was crazy. But I do listen, and I've received emails, and I've been reading posts on social media. And the one conclusion that I was able to come to is that there are so many differing opinions about how to handle the calendar. I give the committee a lot of credit because I think it's really tough to come up with something that's agreeable. So, I've read everything from "I love the November break" to "I hate the November break", and "we shouldn't add school day, snow days to the end of the year, they should be in February". So, I, I just kind of feel like it's sort of a no-win situation of, you know, I know it gets really difficult, so, you know, I, we have listened in the past, definitely. For example, we got rid of a lot of those shortened days throughout the year that I know were a hardship for me as a working parent. We got rid of most of those with the exceptions of the ones at the beginning of the school year and the end of the school year. So, we don't have those monthly ones anymore that cause parents to go into panic every time. So, I just want everybody to know that I do read the comments, and I listen, and I'm taking it all in, and, you know, I just read so many different opinions that it's really hard to, you know, my head is kind of spinning from all the different directions we can go with it. School year's a hundred and eighty days, no matter how you slice it, and, you know, the days off, it, it's difficult, it'll always be difficult, whether you have a day off in February and you need childcare, or you have an extra day off in November. So, that's all I'd say, thanks.
Dr. George, who was on the calendar committee? Who was there for the calendar meeting, please?
We had representatives from parents' organizations, we had principals.
Can we get names, can we get names, who was there?
Off the top of my head, I don't think I can give you all the names, nor do I, um, I mean, yeah, I guess we could, you want to publicly say names?
I'm asking because I'm on the calendar committee, and I know nothing about the calendar committee meeting. So, I'm really disappointed.
I understand.
You met, you met, and I did not hear about it. You met in January, and I did not hear about it. I'm on the committee, and, yeah, I have a very strong opinion about the calendar. You know that for years, you know. And that's why I'm asking, can we get names, who was there? Because where was board representative? Where's board representation? I was the board representation. But you weren't CC. I was, no, I was not. Thank you. I'm upset at that, I'm sorry. You know what, Pam, let me tell you something, too many things have happened. I, I'm, I'm cut out of meetings, and now even with the, no, I'm really upset. I'm sorry, Pam, I support you a hundred percent, but this is not right, so. Okay. I wasn't the president at the time of this meeting.
But you were the January meeting. Because of.
That's okay, okay, thank you. We can talk about this. You can text me, you can call me. I just want you to know how upset I am. I've been a member of this board for the whole time, and it's not right.
I just, good job. I just want to say, we talked last week, uh, last, yeah, last week about adding the board of ed meeting dates to the calendar. I know I'm approving the calendar, but do we add the board meeting dates to the calendar? I mean, everybody said, yeah, it's a great idea.
I thought that where we landed on that was that they gave all the size on the website once the calendar was published, and then it goes on the calendar, they didn't seem to want that. That's, that's where I thought we passed.
Is that okay?
I just want to add, I'm going to be voting now on the calendar. I would really like to see the calendar brought up at PIC so that all the school reps could take it back to their schools, and there could be a discussion at PIC on how different people feel. That's something that we're lacking, and the calendar is a big issue. And Robyn, you're right, you're never going to please everyone. Everyone's got a different opinion, but at least give them the opportunity to have that discussion and bring their concerns out.
Well, Joan, we have discussed the calendar at PIC, yeah, and we discussed.
I haven't found that the minutes, Dr. George, I went back and looked, because people were saying they were not.
We know what the school community has asked this chart has. The school community wanted us to get as early as we possibly could. The committee absolutely took that charge, and, and the board has taken that charge, even with, as already reported out, the changes that have been made in our professional development schedules and negotiations, the change to really work hard to get out of here in the year. So, so, you know, the, the parents have made that very clear and, you know, spoken on that, and we've tried to do that. Some of these issues are competing issues. The federal holidays, again, are a competing issue. So, we have to worry about two things, the ability for the, the delivery of instruction and also for safety and supervision. So, we have a significant number of staff members who could choose not to come to work on those days. Makes it very difficult for us to have, to have students. We've made the compromise of using those as professional development days, because what we have, we know as administrative team, we're also charged to making sure that we're not only getting all of the days for students, but all of the days for employees, and that we're taking advantage of every opportunity for professional development. So, you know, we've tried to, we've tried to recognize that as well. And the parent information committee does have representation on the calendar committee.
I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, we've made a lot of strides. But, I, I mean, I'm only going to have half of the PIC meetings, but I've talked to several PIC reps that said this discussion did not happen at PIC. I went through the minutes, I couldn't find anything in the minutes where it did. Alls I'm saying is, we need to, we need to hear what everybody has to say about the calendar. We can't please everybody, but at least have that conversation. But then all go back to their schools, go to their PTA meetings, and come back and give their feedback at that meeting. There's plenty of meetings for a calendar meeting, that's all I'm saying. Let's, let's hear, because there are, things are changing. Times are changing, finances are changing for families. You know, I've heard a lot of people get upset because we use it as, oh, this is a perfect time for vacation, and, and a lot of people can't afford vacation. All the same is, let's charge PIC to go back and get information from all the schools and let them bring it back so that it can be heard, everybody can feel they were heard. That's all I'm saying, I'm not saying you did anything bad, or it's, it's not right. I just didn't hear that conversation at all.
I'm not suggesting it was a formal topic at PIC. When we had the re, what we do here, we have four-hour PIC meetings at least once a month, where our community, our school community and our parents' organizations really do get an opportunity to, you know, let us know how they feel. It was clear to us that there were some residents and some parents that were concerned about the five days off in November. When we had the second iteration, the second meeting of the calendar committee, we came, we rolled forward a calendar that only had the two days off that we, that were teachers convention. And so, but the, the calendar committee and the parents and the different bargaining units felt that, that that calendar was not in the best interest of the school community since over the last few years, we did have those five days off, and it needed to be more of a, more of a notice if we were going to make that change. That's why we didn't do it. The calendar that we brought as a committee did not take the full week off in November. It was only after, you know, a detailed discussion by the calendar committee that we got that.
Can I just ask a question, a point of order? So, I'm not mistaken, now, the first to the board secretary, the motion is on the floor for being one through four, not mistaken.
So, we're saying.
No, it's one through six. Okay, I want to make sure, okay, I just want to make sure.
One through six.
No, no, it's one there, that goes in different session, that's all.
No, no, we're discussing what's on there. I just wanted to put my opinion out there because there's a lot of people that feel the same way that I do, the discussion needs to be more clear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, you have a motion in the second, it doesn't.
Uh, so, we need a roll call up for this?
Mrs. Rogers, maybe what we could do is do a, do a, what do you call that? A wish vote for one, two, four, five, and six, and roll call for three.
You can do it either way, I mean, if you want to do it together, if you want to vote, you know, for one, and you ask for rest, just say that, that's fine.
Okay.
Let's just go ahead and roll call. We have a motion for, I think, it's one through six, so I'll roll call on that. Mrs. Caminiti?
No, the three and four, yes to the rest.
Mr. DeFranco?
Yes.
Mr. Nollman?
Yes.
Mr. Daimler?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
I'm opposed on one.
Mrs. Minnies?
No on one, three, and four, yes on the rest.
Mrs. Ray?
No on three, yes on the rest.
Mrs. Stella?
Yes.
Mrs. Rogers?
Yes.
So, um, update, I'd just like to, uh, point out for furloughed workers, we worked with both the before and after care with the Y, um, and also with our school families that have participated in our preschool program. Also where, uh, there is a need as it relates to the furlough, uh, for payment to be worked out or changes in that we're, we're working that out on a case by case basis.
Thank you for that. Okay, I need a motion for student services, one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
We put the number four on the floor.
I need, I need a motion for number four. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And we're talking. All right, all right, thanks. So, policy. Okay. So I need a motion on policy. D1, A, B, and C.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed on eight.
Abstentions? I need a motion on E, curriculum, numbers one and two.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Just out of curiosity, what's the date for the trip to, um, the Edison site and in gen- and, and, okay, as I was saying, and in general, is it open?
I'm sorry?
Is it open? It's a.
Oh, I believe it's in the. Yeah, it's in the.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Just, I, I wanted to know if there was a contingency plan if we're sometimes.
They'll have to be scheduled.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I need a motion for finance, number one.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I need approval of E student activities, number one.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, moving on to negotiations.
It says it right here. There's no, there's no action, still on.
I know it. Um, and now for personnel.
Now we have the original report and the addendum. So the original report is P is one through three, addendum is the following two pages.
Four, I, and then don't forget the price of six, six B.
Right, and either six B is being withdrawn.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the first hour report.
With the addendum and either six B is being withdrawn by the legislation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Okay, six B is on page two of the original report.
Hey, roll call?
Mrs. Caminiti?
Yes.
Mr. DeFranco?
Yes.
Mr. Donlin?
Yes.
Mr. Daimler?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Minnies?
Um, I would like to abstain on number fourteen and, um, fourteen A.
Mrs. Ray? Mrs. Stella?
Yes.
Mrs. Rock?
Yes.
Let me pick one between Mr. Cullen.
Yes, Mr. Cullen, our new principal. Okay, moving on to old business.
Okay, yes, old business. I didn't get the opportunity to, um, to report out, but in December I went to, um, Esberry Park to do the, uh, preview of Sonic Highway. The place was standing remotely. Incredible. Former students, past students, people that were featured in the film. It was just remarkable to hear the students talk about the process that they went through. Some of them said, wow, they had no idea that it was going to take that much time and wow, should they really go through with it? But when they gave their end report that they did, they were grateful they did. Some of them are going forward in this field, some of them are going nowhere near this field. But it was an experience, they said, that it was experience of a lifetime, that it was incredible and the amount of time and the amount of detail and the amount of editing when, when students spoke. And, um, it was nice to see both former and, um, present students there and also the, the gentlemen that were in some of those bands, you know, and you get to talk to them about their experiences. I mean, you see it on the, the film, but, um, just to talk to their personal, um, experiences, it was a great project. So I hope that we continue supporting, um, the films. And, and as we see on social media and tonight with the, um, high school representation, a lot of our students are, their films are being nominated for, um, um, being, you know, the best and for second and third. I would like to suggest that we try to start attending some of those, um, film presentations so that we actually could see the work of our students because it's easy to talk about but when you see it, it's a whole different ballgame. So, um, I want to talk about that. I also, um, wanted to talk about the meeting that was held at Navisson last week when Mr. Cullen was, um, introduced. It was like he was there forever. Um, it, it was like the perfect thing. The parents were happy. The conversation that you shared with them just made them feel that their kids were in great hands and, um, I'd just like to wish you the best of success.
Thank you very much.
And for listening to those parents, I, they have no doubts. It was exciting. So that's the old business.
Anyone else, old business? Okay, then moving on to new business.
Um, I'd like to, to make a suggestion, uh, Mrs. Rogers. Kind of following under what Mr. Donlin had proposed at the start of this meeting and there have been a lot of us in the board that discussed this over the past year or so. I think that, you know, our community does a really good job of, um, taking in the presentations that our staff does, of course, um, and our staff does a good job, um, creating presentations that will keep us awake for three or four hours. And so I think it, it would benefit the community if we make a permanent change to our agenda structure, the presentations are grouped, uh, as the first item. Then we do the first round of public comment because the presentations are agenda items so common on agenda items only. Then we progress which remains of the agenda and then end up with, uh, over the public comment. So I feel if anybody else in the board has any comment on this, I feel this would be a positive change.
Good idea.
Any objection to that?
No, I actually sent an email to the policy committee asking, very similar, and you responded back. Didn't matter to me where they could respond as long as they could respond while the professionals aren't here and their questions are asked. Because if you don't do that, you're going to have rumors out there and, and not complete thoughts of what was really said.
If we're on the floor and I know that there's some issues, but in terms of the step, we can post them before the meeting. Yeah, we have. Yeah, we're, not all, sometimes there, yeah, if we can. All of these. Yeah, yeah, so it's basically that we, that we always do that, that we can see it beforehand. Us too. Yeah, come in here, you kind of can put a crew and say, ah, watch.
And I do have other new business. Um, I know Pam touched on a few fundraisers before. We also have a few fundraisers coming up. Um, Bayview's gift auction is March eighth. High School North is having one on February twenty second. And Bay Shore is having yours on May tenth and I'm sure that there's going to be a few more popping up once we get the dates. Um, so, you know, if we could just keep, uh, advertising them all. For anybody watching the films, you could contact the schools for the information on the website. It's all there. And my last thing of, um, new business is Pam, how did you tell me you go last night?
Um, so I got there a bit late and the meeting was finished. It only lasted 25 minutes. Um, and, uh, so I texted the mayor, I said, I'm sorry, I missed the meeting. And he said, I was just going to text you, we got out a little early. And, um, you know, I said, I'll see you at the next one. And, um, I did speak to some people in the lobby and they said that Pat Snell did mention that she came to our meeting and she's happy about the new relationship that we have going on. So I was excited about that. And, uh, yeah, everything's going really well with the town committee, so I'm happy. All right, any other new business? Okay, now I'd like to open the mic to public comment.
Hi, my name is Gina Dunzera, I'm a parent of two kids at High School South. Unfortunately, I missed last week's board meeting. I understand this topic was discussed, but I did have the opportunity to attend January fourteenth program, um, that the two high schools hosted, the advanced placement program across the schools. It was a great meeting, it was a good opportunity to hear and great attendance. Um, but I believe everyone's aware there's been a lot of feedback since that meeting and a lot of suing engagement about some of the material changes that were made to the program, specifically about making AP course, uh, testing mandatory versus optional. So my question for the board is, I'd like to understand what the next steps are in that process. I have been scouring all of the minutes for these meetings. Procedurally, I'm not familiar with what the typical process should be for such a material change to a program. It certainly has engaged the students and a number of parents. So I'm interested to hear what the district is planning for next steps to that program.
Before they answer you, before they answer you, is there a piece of paper there where you can put your name and how to contact you because?
Well, today, uh, we continued, uh, uh, both last week at High School South and today, met with members, members of the administrative team and discussions with students on multiple topics, but this was one of our topics at this point. I'll turn it over to the speakers to let you know where we are and where we're going and what the steps are.
Well, Dr. George said we've had, um, this week, we hosted two forums at High School South, High School North. Um, it was interesting that there were different perspectives from both sides presented. Um, just before.
Just pointing a few that side of it out to you.
Well, yeah, let me finish. So, so we're going to be rescheduling additional meetings, um, because we know that there was, you know, there wasn't a lot of advanced notice.
Wasn't a lot of advanced notice. So, uh, we will be rescheduling meetings at both high schools again. Um, we're trying to get the word out for students to come at both high schools. Both perspectives in terms of being in favor of the, you know, what's been discussed in terms of, um, uh, required, expected, you know, participation in the exams. Uh, there's been, students have spoken in favor of that, students who have been spoken against it. Uh, we've received information from parents, again, varying perspectives and sides. Uh, we're, we're going to col- continue to collect, uh, that community, you know, perspective. Uh, we have been reaching out to various districts as well. Um, it's, we're not unique in the challenges that we face with the decline in participation in the AP exam, um, although in the county, we are kind of, you know, in the lower tier of participation. And, uh, I, no final decision has been made. Um, we continue to reiterate and reinforce the fact that no, even if we move down that path, our position was always that no student would ever be excluded from participation um, based on any financial hardship. Um, in the past, the schools have provided assistance to students and we will continue to do so um, when, when necessary, um, or, or appropriate. Um, but again, no final decision has been made. We continue to collect, you know, perspectives and information.
Thank you for that input. It's, you realize that some of the students are feeling pressured with how, and the timing is for them to make the decisions right now for their courses for next year, based on that input. So will that happen before the deadline? Is it a fact?
Hence why we started with meetings this week and we're going to have follow up, you know, we're trying to expedite the timeline because we know that. That's why we started the conversation as early as we did this year, you know, back in January, um, at that meeting, you know, what was that, last week, week and a half ago? Um, because we wanted to put, let the conversation we had, you know, um, obviously, you know, it's going to take time to, to gather all the input. Thank you.
Pam Smith, Quirka School. Hi, I'm not here to talk on calendar, but I do appreciate the discussion that's opening up and getting Karen Holden in it. I have a question, um, gave me about the parent organization policy, the revisions. Um, they took out the application for fundraising to be submitted to our building principal and to superintendent, which, um, and they took out the financial review piece, which I appreciate as PTA president and I'm happy to do that. But we still, there's a part that says, um, parent organizations, um, in order to solicit monies still need approval by the board. So I just want to know what the policy, what procedure will be moving forward for the PTAs?
And I'd be happy to talk with you offline just to answer your question also. Where, fundraisers still need to be approved. What was, what was eliminated was the financial reporting on the individual events and then the semi-annual recording on the organization.
Okay.
The fundraisers still need to be approved.
All right, because it's cross out, the application to fundraise was removed. So I just want to make sure the policy changed or the procedure changed, you know.
The only, the procedure that's changed is the reporting of the finances of it. Or the fundraisers still need to be approved.
Informed, moving forward.
Yes.
Good evening, William Cusoffly, uh, City of, uh, Minneapolis, Middle Town. Uh, regarding, um, the, uh, article I gave you, uh, the last meeting, about a week ago, uh, it, the article cited ten categories where sixth, seventh, and eighth graders have to be instructed in, I guess, general specific areas of, uh, economy that, uh, don't necessarily face them in, in their, uh, current, uh, uh, grades, but certainly will, uh, crop up in, uh, high school and, and, and college. And, uh, so addressing that, uh, article, uh, there's a, as I summarize, uh, a law was passed and a state law was passed in, uh, um, twenty fourteen. Uh, the assistant governor, uh, assigned a law, uh, twenty eighteen. I don't know if anything's new. Uh, I would think it would be your obligation to, uh, thoroughly research what the law is and, and satisfy the state for this reason. If they're imposing on you a, uh, a, a kind and degree of education through three grades, and I think it should be up in the high school as well. You know, there are other things like the US Constitution and state constitution that they should not be, uh, experts on, but they should be, have more than a nod and acquaintance about it. So, uh, my point is this, uh, is, uh, uh, the, uh, the Jersey State Benefit and Pension, uh, division has, uh, made this, uh, district suffer financially. Uh, and, uh, the state aid in the last year or two, uh, the state has also made you suffer in, uh, financially in two ways. Um, uh, I couldn't specify them because you know these things better than I. Uh, but the, the point is, is that, uh, I think you need to get together, like, uh, made the, the presentation that Amy Gallagher and, uh, her assistant, I don't remember his name, but anyway, that presented, uh, you can give the, give a graphic, graphic presentation. that presented, uh, you can give the, you can give a graphic, graphic presentation of what departments in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade are actually doing with instruction and learning for those sixth grades. For this reason, there may be involved, uh, all New Jersey state income tax is for tax relief. And that means for the property payers in this township which funds this school district. That's what, what I have gathered from public information, uh, mainly through the, uh, the press. And so, uh, it seems to me that if you could get together that kind of material, and you can, uh, document the cost of the, the instruction, maybe there may be involved, and I suspect there is, um, because the state's going to pay as little as possible, in my opinion, that's an opinion I, you know. Uh, uh, there, there, there could be involved an unfunded obligation. That's the phrase, that's the, the county, the county uses it when they go to the meetings. The committee in Middletown uses it, unfunded obligations. When you make a law and it costs the local government money, additional money, and the state's not providing, uh, their, uh, I don't like the phrase, fair share, but I have to use it, uh, because they have obligated themselves legally, according to the instructions, I guess, and the definitions of, uh, what the obligations for, uh, public education throughout all levels of, uh, learning. Uh, and I'd like to see the presentation that, uh, in, in public, this is the second time I mention it. I, I, I'll probably not mention it again, uh, but, uh, I'd like to just comment briefly about the art, uh, the, the statistical thing. I made mistakes, uh, I wrote, and I corrected it. I attended a meeting last, last, uh, last evening at the, uh, the town hall with the Middletown, uh, committee, and, uh, uh, the deputy mayor, Fiore, uh, explaining some questions I have about this. He said, this is a, uh, a tax impact statement. It is not, this is paraphrasing, it is not an amortization schedule. But it's a, but it, that's, that's quite a revelation. Every number down here is a tax, and it has an impact on the local taxes, fire departments, school district, uh, uh, and the, uh, municipal, municipal government. Uh, the first column to the left is debt service. They have made the statement that this is not.
Okay, thank you, Leo, we'll, we'll all read this. Thank you. Your time is up. Alright, I need a motion to adjourn, please? Oh, anyone else? Sorry.
Hi, sorry, I'll be quick, Rachel Conata. Um, just one quick point about the calendar, not so much the dates, but the inclusion of the Board of Ed meetings. My understanding from last week was actually, I think what you said, Mike, that it actually be printed on this piece of paper. This piece of paper is very valuable. This is up on every refrigerator in Middletown. So I think using it as a mechanism to communicate the Board of Ed, um, meeting dates is kind of, this is the best channel you're going to get. Um, besides that, I know the individual calendars that the schools maintain. I was just quickly looking at Nutswamps, for example, and it doesn't have tonight's meeting on the Nutswamp calendar. And I know we have two calendars now, which is kind of confusing. We have the district school page, and then the PTA runs a separate calendar. I believe it's on the PTA one, but it's not on the one that, that's overseen by the district. So I would just ask that the Board of Ed meetings, both voting and the workshop, get put on every possible calendar that the district is responsible for, whether at the district level or at the school level. Because I think, to the extent we want families here and engaged, like, you got to get in front of them. And unfortunately, unless, like, I go in and I type them into my calendar myself, but it would be a lot easier if it was already there and you just kind of swipe it right in and have it there. And then again, this paper is so valuable. So, I noticed that you guys added the emergency days, kind of disclaimer, I think that's huge. I think, hopefully, next year you'll get a lot less complaints about the school year going late, because this is in front of them now, you can point back to it. Uh, I know on Facebook, I do want to say thank you, because I feel like over the past year or so, there's been a lot more use of Facebook as a channel to post not only the meetings as events, but also the agendas once they're published. And that has helped me immensely, as a parent who's on Facebook a lot, so thank you very much for that. Um, the only other two quick comments was if there was any way to ever create a blast with the agendas once they're published, kind of similar to the remind system, where you get an email and it says, oh, the agenda's available, go check here. I know I would find that very valuable, just as a reminder to check it out before, you know, the hour before I come to the meeting. And then, uh, John had mentioned it earlier, if the presentations could be posted earlier just so we could review them and come with educated questions, um, so it doesn't kind of drag on for multiple weeks, you might be able to actually save everybody time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing nobody come to the mic, I'd like a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.